Test one, two.
All right. Read my notes then. All right, good evening. I'm calling to order the August 14th meeting of the City of Kalamazoo Zoning Board of Appeals, volunteer advisory board appointed by the City Commission. Would staff please conduct the roll call?
Brandon Hopper.
Brandon Hopper.
Present.
Work.
Here.
Holder.
Here.
Sylvester.
Here.
McReynolds.
Here.
And we've heard from Harrington and Han, the two that are absent.
Excellent. I think we got a quorum, right?
Yes.
Any announcements or changes to the agenda?
We do have a change to the agenda for tonight. The public hearing for 1900 Belford Street is not going to move forward. I heard from the Edison Community Partners late this afternoon that they need to revisit the percentage of natural materials they're going to have on the three buildings proposed for the site. And so that will most likely come back for the September 11th zoning board of appeals meeting.
Excellent. Which leaves us with nothing on the agenda but the changes to the bylaws. I believe that's correct. Do we have enough people present? We have enough people present to vote on that?
Yes. Yes, we do.
Then, do we need a summary to get us back up to speed?
Yes. I think that would be helpful for the viewing audience as well. So, the zoning board of appeals has been working over the last couple of months on amendments to what are referred to as the rules of procedure for this board. Other boards refer to them as the bylaws. And, so first of all, the initial change is to be consistent with the other citizen boards for the City of Kalamazoo and use the term bylaws and eliminate rules of procedure. Pretty significant membership change is being proposed and that is moving from six members to seven members. It will go from an even number board to a odd number board, which will be, actually will be helpful and create less confusion. In addition to that, to avoid confusion, we're clarifying under the voting section that a minimum of four votes, four affirmative votes is required to approve a variance or any request, just to make sure that there isn't any any question marks left out there. So if there's less than seven board members, it still requires four affirmative votes to approve a request. And then moving towards the back of the rules of procedure, under the post-determination, there are two sections. One is referred to as reconsideration and the second is referred to as rehearing. And these are actions that after review by the attorney's office and our attorney's office liaison to the ZBA, Attorney Bear, it's been determined that even though these have been in the rules of procedure for quite some time, there is no legal precedent to, for the board to have this sort of authority to bring a request that's been voted on back to the board. The Michigan Zoning Enabling Act and the, you know, other elements of our current rules of procedure make it very clear that the decisions are to be final. And, so, it creates, you know, complexities and difficulties to have a decision be made but not know if, you know, a board member may take an action that would then cause it to be brought back within this 10-day period that's spelled out in the rules of procedure. So the action requested for the amendment here is to remove both of those, both the motion of reconsideration and the rehearing process that's laid out, so that those will be gone. And that is a brief summary of the amendments proposed. I think it'd be good to just open the floor for any questions from board members.
Well, I have the memo from Attorney Bear and I agree. I mean, I generally agree with what it has to say in terms of its conclusions. But I'm curious, because there's one, I don't think it's one of the statutes that you quote. It's 125.3606. It does say that an appeal from the decision of a zoning board of appeals shall be filed within whichever of the following deadlines comes first. Thirty days after we issue our decision in writing, signed by me, or 21 days after the minutes of the, approves the minutes of the decision. So I'm curious, does that give us a window in which we can say our decision isn't final yet and could potentially rehear it or reconsider it?
No.
And Shelby's going to say, please turn on your microphone, Charlie.
I need to turn it on. I positioned it carefully, but it would be talking into it.
Yes.
Yes.
But, yes, Shelby mentioned, speaking into the microphone, I, if she said it, I did not hear the instruction to be sure and turn it on before you speak. So I apologize for that, Shelby.
So, the question.
That establishes, it's, time is needed to put together an appeal, so that's a period of time. When it becomes effective, whether the minutes are approved or whether it's sent. But that doesn't give you authority to reconsider it within that time. Once you make it, it's final.
So, I mean, my question then is, when, I don't know if the statute, because I tried to find something that would say that as soon as we vote, it's final. And I don't know that I found anything saying that, which is why I sort of focused in on this, was with the, is it not final till we approve the minutes? Or is it not final until we just kind of sign a decision? Or what, where I suppose, as the chair, I sign the decision?
Well, it's final. When you make the decision, it isn't considered in effect and starts the appeal period to circuit court running until.
Okay.
Either one of those things.
That's what I was going to say, is, yeah, it's a final decision when you make the decision. All that specifying is that window for filing the appeal, you know, it's 30 days from one of these two actions. Now, the City of Kalamazoo, we're not that concerned about closing the door on the appeal. So our steps are, I send out a quote "decision letter" signed by the liaison to the board, which is me. And it isn't, you know, that 30-day window doesn't really start to run until after the following meeting, when you sign the meeting minutes and make those official. So, so we kind of give them essentially a two-month window to, you know, file an appeal if they want to.
And part of the reason for asking, obviously, is Ms. Harrington, who's not here, was pretty convinced that the statute or statutes authorized it or didn't prohibit it or something to that effect. So I was trying to find something that I thought could support her position, if only to be the devil's advocate in this instance. Because I'm going to vote to remove it when we get there. But at least out of fairness, I wanted to ask about it to her, for her.
Well, frankly, I looked for that too. And I, that's, I would not be doing my job if I didn't, just to make sure that my conclusion is correct. There's something that can be interpreted another way. And sometimes that's the case with laws, as I'm sure you're aware. There can be more than one interpretation. They aren't always clear. Courts have rules for dealing with those if that question gets raised in the court proceeding. But in this case, court has ruled and it's pretty clear.
Yeah. May I add a comment?
Yeah.
After we last discussed this, and then when we received the materials for tonight's meeting, I was thinking about this. And then being here tonight, I'm struck by the fact that different board members attend these meetings and different board members can't attend. That's why we have alternates. And so, if this reconsideration would continue, one may be, one's application may be heard then by a different board with different composition, with different views, which also struck me as unfair that you would have a reconsideration by a different composition of the board. So all the more reason why I favor making this change. And having, in the past, had applications for clients denied by the zoning board of appeals, where then the client and we then considered an appeal, we viewed that as a window period during which we were making our decision, do we or don't we file an appeal, requesting a transcript of the meeting and studying that. The minutes then get finalized and approved. So I considered that to be part of the process when an applicant who feels aggrieved for being denied would be thinking about their appeal rights. That's how I viewed that. Joe?
Yeah.
Yeah. I thought the two different boards looking at the same issue, the courts don't, they don't like that. They're not, you can't do that. So, yeah, that's a good point. Very good point.
And I, I think I also looked through the, I don't remember if you cited one case or two in there, Charlie. Like, I don't think the courts even, because one of them, I think, was many, many months later and one of them may have, or another one I found was maybe an unspecified amount of time. And it kind of just seemed like their position was, the amount of time didn't matter. Because I was, could we, could we get it down to a week? Could it be within the same meeting? And it kind of seemed, which is why I say I agree with the recommendation of the attorney. But again, Ms. Harrington was fairly convinced, so I went trying to look for it too. No matter what, I'm going to vote to remove them. But I did talk at the last meeting about having some mechanism in there where if somebody makes a motion and there's a second to just kind of table it for a meeting. I do like that idea personally, because then a person can have a little more time and you don't have to like, what's the word I'm looking for? You don't have to violate the law or any of this sort of thing. But to put some limits on that, where you can do that once and on that, on that particular request and you're done.
Can't we do that now? We can table anything, right? And come back to following month, yeah? So, it's already there.
But who's, on, what's the authority? What I mean by, is it, I didn't go back through the bylaws. Are we dependent upon the chair to say, yes, I agree? Or can the chair say, kick rocks? Is it a, you know, majority of the board can table it?
Motion.
It's a motion.
Right.
And it's voted on.
And so that's why I was thinking a motion with a second would just be enough to table it for a meeting. And that should be, and the reason I'm saying it is, I may not be the chair of this board forever, but somebody may want to take, I can't be the chair of the board forever, I have to be on at some point. Somebody may want that mechanism in the future and may not have a receptive chairperson to whatever the request is, to adjourn it or table it for a meeting.
Right, yeah. That is not something that's at the discretion of the chair. That requires a motion, second, vote.
But I also don't want it up to like a majority of the board to make that. You see where I'm getting? I don't want it to be to the chair's discretion, but I also don't want it to be to the whole board's, like, as a, because then you're just in a tyranny of the majority kind of thing, which, as a tyranny, it's the majority. But I try and think of ways to build in a little more automatic time if somebody really wanted it and there was a second for it.
So on the Housing Board of Appeals and the Dangerous Buildings Board that I was on, quite often we would have to table something because we didn't have enough information to raise a property. And no one ever had an issue with tabling something because you just, it's like, it makes sense. You know, you don't have the information, so table it and come back to it.
Well, I know that some people will come and they're pretty ready to vote and others are, I'm not saying nobody's coming ready to vote, but they may sit here and hear some stuff and think, I want to take a few more days with it. And, which I'm fine, not a few more days, it'd be a few weeks, but I'm fine with it. Other, other people may not be. So that's why I say, is it up to? I'm always going to be in favor of tabling if somebody is sitting here saying, I can't make a, make a decision, even if it's clearly going to be five to one or six to one against that person.
Well, that's your discretion, certainly. But the board has that authority to do it. The board has the authority to request more information of the applicant. And usually, that's not an issue, particularly with the assistance of staff.
Yeah.
Who reviews the things and make sure that they got the materials and information they need. So that's some assurance against that. But still, there may be something come up that you want to know something else.
And honestly, in the, I've been on this board two years or three, whatever amount of time it is, it's, it's never really been an issue and it's not, doesn't even apply to this, the reconsideration situation we had. This is just me thinking in a different way. Because that was not, sorry, Pete, that was not her wanting more time. That was a, I voted, thought about it, and a few minutes later wanted to alter that vote.
Yeah. No, I, I mean, I think that's exactly the mindset we should have going forward is, you know, you know, we don't need to lean on something like this motion of reconsideration. If there's questions, if you feel there's questions that are unanswered, you know, it's on you, the board member, to verbalize your concerns, you know, when we're having the discussion and, you know, and not let it get to, we're voting on, you know, the request at hand. You know, for the fairness of the applicant, though, really, you know, like, as Attorney Bear mentioned, it's got to be, the board has to vote on tabling a request. Is it tabling or adjourning? What is the correct?
Turning to a time certain. Tabling is setting it off to later in the meeting. Those terms are readily confused, but.
And it's supposed to be one meeting. It's supposed to be, you know, moving it just to the next meeting. So you're, if you're going to be making a motion to adjourn to the next meeting, being able to articulate, you know, for the viewing audience, why the board is not prepared to vote on it. And, you know, so, which, which, in the past, you know, we rarely run into that circumstance. But I think we would want to, you know, we want to be able to do that if we're going to adjourn something to the next meeting.
Fair enough. Does anybody want to say anything else on the bylaws?
I do.
Go for it.
I'm looking for some clarity and I would like to provide a little context of my understanding as we move forward in this conversation, not only for myself, but for our listening audience. I can certainly understand why the city would like to kind of firm this up a little bit and kind of, it seems like there's some, possibly some unnecessary complications. And I get that. I have some concerns about removing Section 8 from the zoning board of appeals. I like the fact that, you know, it's not something, an idea I want to entertain very often. I've been serving on this committee, I think, since 2017. And I asked for a reconsideration once. So Pete, do you happen to know how many times? I know this is document, this zoning board of appeals rules of procedure was originally drafted in 2017. It was amended in 2022. So we've been working off of this guide since then. So since 2017, does anybody know how many times we've asked for a reconsideration? I know I asked once.
I would only be guessing. I do know that these, you know, these sections of the rules of procedure have been in here, they were here prior to 2017.
Okay.
It was, that was when they redrafted it because I think it was just a printed document that was being passed around. And then they actually, they, Attorney John Neese, you know, actually drafted new, you know, new language that we'd have in a Word document that we could work with going forward. But I, but I don't know. I, you know, probably been, you know, three over the last eight years, probably.
Okay. All right, because it's not something I want the public to understand. It's not, it's a rare thing that happens. So we have this document from 2017 with one amendment. And now we're looking to the second amendment, which is going to take away all of Section 8 that gave the citizens' board the chance, if need be, which nobody wants to do and it's not fun, to ask for a reconsideration. So that, that's my understanding on that. So I, yeah, I'm more concerned about that. When I, when I looked into the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, it was, it gets confusing for, you know, the outsiders, myself being one of them. You know, when we talk about ordinances and whether something is law or, or not. And when I looked it up, it said additionally, the ZBA itself can choose to rehear a case and if they do, they can reconsider their initial decision. Let's see. The Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, when the ZBA has concerns about the decisions they made, when they would like to revisit the topic and that there are two ways something can be reconsidered. And that's with the applicant. If they don't get the decision they want, they can take it to circuit court. Or, you know, we can look within ourselves and say, oh yeah, request for reconsideration or rehearing if allowed by a local ordinance. So when I read that, I was like, yeah, okay. Local ordinance, that's why we, the city allows us to be able to do that. So local zoning ordinances may include provisions for the ZBA to reconsider its decision, typically based on a motion by a member who voted with the prevailing side or didn't vote. And then such reconciliation typically occurs within the 10 days. So when I looked at this, I was like, well, it seems like this is built into what we, what we currently have, our zoning board of appeals rules of procedure. And I'm concerned about taking all of what I'm understanding of Article 8 away.
The, what you're referencing there
Yeah.
is out of the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act?
Yes.
Right? Okay. I'm just wondering, because the, you know, because the board has the authority to, you know, to weigh in on administrative decisions and affirm, you know, an administrative decision by the planning staff or, you know, or not. And I'm just trying to figure out, that language about reconsidering is more tied to something other than a variance request. But I don't know off the top of my head, but.
All right.
Well, what, as I understood what you're referencing, it's referring to a provision in the ordinance. And the rules of procedure are not an ordinance. And we don't have anything in the zoning ordinance that authorizes reconsideration or rehearing. Those are two entirely different things.
But I hear you saying then, between ordinance and law.
Ordinance is a law.
Okay.
Rules of procedure are simply rules of procedure. They aren't laws. Ordinances are the laws established by the legislative body of the city, that is, the commission.
Okay. So.
Statutes are laws established by the legislature.
Okay, so, so why is all of Section 8 that gave us the authority or, you know, the right to do a reconsideration being taken away?
Because case law says, if there is not a specific provision in a statute or ordinance giving you that authority, the ZBA does not have that authority. The ZBA only has the authority given to it by statute or ordinance. And there is no specific provision in the MZEA or city ordinances giving you that authority. So essentially, if you had a rehearing or a reconsideration and if you reversed the original decision, that would essentially be meaningless because if you don't have the authority, you're going to be reversed in circuit court because you did not have that authority. So if you don't have the authority in the statute or the ordinance, which you don't, it's kind of pointless to have a reconsideration. You're going to get sued and if you reversed your decision, which would be, the purpose of reconsideration decide, well, do we want to change our minds? And, and rule the other way. And if you don't have the authority to have a reconsideration and your decision is final, which the law says it is, there's no point in having a reconsideration.
All right, so I would like to repeat this back because I think you understand what you're saying now. I am looking at this zoning board of appeals rules for procedure and I'm, I guess I'm treating it like a law, you know, because we have Section 8 that we can do. treating it like a law, you know, because we have Section 8, that we can do something. But, but it's not really a law, it's just a rule, a procedure.
It's a guideline.
Okay.
It's a procedure by, by laws, a guideline.
Okay.
It doesn't carry the same force and effect as a law.
Okay. All right. So, we, we had something within our jurisdiction to do, we were authorized, it was okay for us to do. But in reality, we don't have, when I'm hearing you say, in reality, is we don't have a law.
Well, we've done it.
So, it doesn't count.
A lot of other communities have done it, that they simply weren't aware of the court decision, and the limitation on the authority of the ZBA. And we've adopted Roberts' rules of order, and the Roberts' rules of order has provisions for rehearings and reconsiderations. So, we'll do it. But that wasn't consistent with the law. Again, Roberts' rules of order are rules of procedure, or guidelines. They aren't mandates of authority, if you will.
Okay. And then, I didn't realize this, and, and, again, I'm providing a little context for our listening audience, in the, the research that I did. My understanding of this, too, and again, I can understand why the city wants to firm this up, and just to be clear, you know, having zoning board of appeals rules of procedure with Section 8 in it, it's a rule, not a law. It can be changed. And by changing it now to saying zoning board of appeals bylaws, let's see, where do I have it here? Yes. By replacing rules of procedure with zoning board of appeals bylaws, that now means, if this passes, and I believe it will, that the, let me see, just a second. One moment, please. All right. By changing it from rules of procedures to bylaws, I just want everybody to be clear that the bylaw using that term then makes it a law. The bylaws are legally binding for our organization and the citizenry that, that we govern, and that you can be, yeah, taken to court. Serious.
Bylaws may have law in it, but it, it's still rules of procedure and guidelines. There are two names for the same thing.
Okay.
They have the same force and effect, whether you call it bylaws or rules of procedure.
Really?
Yes.
Corporate bodies have bylaws.
Right.
They're just the, thank you. They're just the rules, they're procedures by which you do business.
Right.
It's not like it's a, a law.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I, I believe you. I just, I, I looked it up, and it was like, bylaws, legally binding.
I know, that word, law, maybe.
Yeah. And, and I...
And your questions are legitimate, please.
Yeah, legal action may be taken.
Confusing.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. All right. I will conclude.
Thank you. Am I allowed to make the motion to, what is it, or somebody else got to do it?
I think someone else has got to do it. Alan, you want to do it?
Sure. What, the action we're taking, I, I move that we approve the proposed revision to our, our bylaws, including the, the title of the document, including the revision to this, Article 8 of our bylaws.
I second that motion.
Thank you. We probably need to take a, we probably don't need any more debate on this.
No.
No, but I thought it was good that you had brought all those issues up, and we had a chance to talk about those, Beth. It really...
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Put some effort into that, and that was helpful for all of us to think this through carefully.
All right.
It's been on the agenda for like, three meetings. We've thought about it pretty carefully.
Yeah. Just a procedural item. So, so the motion is to approve all the proposed changes to the rules of procedure.
It is, yes.
He called out a couple in specific, but there were others that are...
There are others as well.
...expanding the board, et cetera.
All right.
That were part of that.
That's all I needed for the record.
You're good. I think you got to take a roll call.
And then, I'm sorry, who seconded it?
Tony did.
Tony.
Tony did. Thank you. All right. And we'll start the voting on this end with McReynolds?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Holder?
Yes.
Wark?
Yes.
Brandon Humber?
No.
Thank you. So, that would carry, what's the number, four to one? Even if we had our additional member here, the worst it could have been is four to two. So, I would say that passes.
Yep.
So, that is effective. What would be the effective date on it? Is it today?
I'm sorry.
Uh-oh.
Oh, yeah, that doesn't change anything.
Yeah. I'm sorry. The, the question that was asked was, the way we started the meeting, we skipped right over approval of the meeting minutes from last month?
Oh, we got to do that, too.
So, we can, we can revisit that.
Thank you, Shelby.
Shelby's keeping us on track here. But let, yeah, let's, but we, yeah, let's finish where we're at here with, with this.
Yes, I skipped right over that. My, my bad.
So, you had a question, the effective date, I believe it would be today, if the date of approval.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, and those are approved, which means Alan will see you at the next meeting for sure. Because I think that bumps you up into regular member, and leaves Mr. Urban as our sole alternate for the moment. Which, by the way, the website, I think, has got to be updated to reflect him as an alternate. I think it still had that blank for the moment.
Oh, Jack Urban.
Yeah. Because I went through there to get to the meeting materials, and I don't think it's been updated. I don't know that that's your fault, Pete, or whoever's, but whoever's watching, get it fixed.
Well, there's a lot of things we're on hold, waiting to see, you know, if we were going to revamp the amendments again, or if we were going to approve them, so...
No sweat, no sweat. All right. So, now we've got to deal with last month's minutes. Would somebody make a motion on that?
I move to approve the July minutes.
I support that motion.
There you go. Alan, second.
That motion.
There you go. Any discussion on the minutes? No, and I think we can do this by voice vote, right?
Correct.
All those in favor of approving the minutes from July, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those are approved by a voice vote. I believe that concludes tonight's business.
Excellent.
We're adjourned. See you in September.
Thank you.
Awesome.
I think we all avoided talking.